I seek God's protection from the rejected Satan.
(In the name of Allah, the gracious, the merciful)
(All praise belongs to Allah alone, Lord of all the worlds)
Master of the Day of Judgment.
(Thee alone do we worship, and thee alone do we implore for help)
(Guide us in the straight path)
(The path of those on whom Thou hast bestowed thy favors, those who have not incurred thy displeasure, and those who have not gone astray)
shall not avail them at all against Allah, and it is they that are the fuel of the fire)
(Their case is like the case of the people of Pharaoh and those before them; they rejected our signs, so Allah punished them for their sins, and Allah is severe in punishing)
(Say to those who disbelieve: "You shall be overcome and gathered unto Hell, and an evil place of rest it is")
one army fighting in the way of Allah, and the other disbelieving, whom they saw with their own eyes to be twice as many as themselves; thus Allah strengthens with His aid whomsoever He pleases; in that surely is a lesson for those who have eyes)
women and children, and stored up heaps of gold and silver, and horses of mark, and cattle, and crops; that is the provision of the present life; but it is Allah with whom is an excellent home)
For those who fear God, there are gardens with their Lord, beneath which streams flow, therein shall they abide, and pure mates and Allah's pleasure; and Allah is mindful of His servants)
(Those who say: "Our Lord, we do believe; forgive us therefore our sins, and save us from the punishment of the fire")
and those who spend in the way of Allah, and those who pray for pardon in the latter part of the night)
and also do the angels and those possessed of knowledge, maintaining justice; there is no God but He, the mighty, the wise)
but after knowledge had come to them, out of mutual envy; and whoso denies the signs of Allah, then surely Allah is quick at reckoning)
(But if they dispute with thee, say: "I have surrendered myself completely to Allah, and also those who follow me," and say to those who have been given the book, and to the unlearned: "Have you also surrendered?" If they surrender, then they will surely be rightly guided; but if they turn back, then thy duty is only to convey the message)
But if they dispute with thee, say: "I have surrendered myself completely to Allah, and also those who follow me," and say to those who have been given the book, and to the unlearned: "Have you also surrendered?" If they surrender, then they will surely be rightly guided; but if they turn back, then thy duty is only to convey the message)
and seek to slay the prophets unjustly, and seek to slay such men as in joint equity, announce to them a painful punishment)
(Those are they whose deeds shall come to naught in this world and in the next, and they shall have no helpers)
They are called to the Book of Allah, that it may judge between them; but a party of them turn away in aversion)
(That is because they say: "The fire shall not touch us, except for a limited number of days," and what they used to forge has deceived them regarding their religion)
(How will it be with them when we gather them together on the day about which there is no doubt, and when every soul shall be paid in full what he has earned, and they shall not be wronged?)
Thou givest sovereignty to whomsoever Thou pleasest, and Thou takest away sovereignty from whomsoever Thou pleasest; Thou exaltest whomsoever Thou pleasest, and Thou abasest whomsoever Thou pleasest; in Thy hand is all good; Thou surely hast power to do all things)
(Thou makest the night pass into the day, and makest the day pass into the night; and Thou bringest forth the living from the dead, and bringest forth the dead from the living; and Thou givest to whomsoever Thou pleasest without measure)
in preference to believers, and whosoever does that has no connection with Allah, except that you guard yourselves fully against them; and Allah cautions you against His punishment; and to Allah is the returning)
(Say: "Whether you hide what is in your breasts or reveal it, Allah knows it; and He knows whatever is in the heavens and whatever is in the earth; and Allah has power to do all things)
(Day you find all that has been done from good, and from sin)
(Be aware of the day when every soul shall find itself confronted with all the good it has done, and all the evil it has done; it will wish there were a great distance between it and that evil; and Allah cautions you against His punishment; and Allah is most compassionate to His servants)
And Allah is watchful of His servants)
then will Allah love you and forgive you your sins; and Allah is most forgiving and merciful)
but if they turn away, then remember that Allah loves not the disbelievers)
(Allah chose Adam and Noah, and the family of Abraham, and the family of Imran, above all peoples of the time)
(They were descendants of one another, and Allah is all-hearing, all-knowing)
(Remember when a woman of Imran said:[1442.82][1443.02]"My lord, I have vowed to thee what is in my womb to be dedicated to thy service; so do thou accept it of me?" Verily, thou alone art all-hearing, all-knowing)
and Allah knew best of what she was delivered, and the male she desired to have was not like the female she was delivered of; and I have named her Mary, and I commit her and her offspring to thy protection from Satan the rejected)
and caused her to grow in excellent growth, and made Zechariah her guardian; whenever Zechariah visited her in the chamber, he found her with provisions; he said: "O Mary, whence hast now this?" She replied: "It is from Allah; surely Allah gives to whomsoever He pleases without measure)
(Then and there did Zechariah pray to his Lord, saying:[1660.82][1661.02]"My lord, grant me from thyself pure offspring; surely thou art the hearer of prayer")
"Allah gives the glad tidings of Yehya, who shall testify to the truth of a word from Allah, noble and chaste, and a prophet, from among the righteous)
(He said: "My lord, how shall I have a son, when old age has overtaken me already, and my wife is barren?" He answered: "Such is the way of Allah; he does what he pleases)
(That is because they say: "The fire shall not touch us,
قال آيتك أن لا تكلمنا فلا ست أيام إلا رضا والكذبك كثيرا وسبح بالعشى والإبكار
He said: "My Lord, give me a commandment." He replied: "The commandment for thee is that thou shalt not speak to men for three days except by signs. And remember thy Lord much, and glorify Him in the evening and in the early morning."
وَإذْ قالت الملائكة يا مظيم إن الله اصطفاك وطهرك وأصطفاك وأصطفاك على نساء العالمين
And remember when the angel said: "O Mary, Allah has chosen thee and purified thee, and chosen thee above all women of the time."
يا مظيم كن تلي ربك وأسجدي وابقعي معضوكي عين
O Mary, be obedient to thy Lord, and prostrate thyself and worship the one God with those who worship Him.
ذلك من أنباء الغيب نوح إليه وما كنت لديهم إذ يلقون أقلامهم أيهم يغفلوا مظيم وما كنت لديهم إذ يحتصمون
This is the tidings of the things unseen, which we reveal to thee. And thou wast not with them when they cast their arrows, as to which of them should be the guardian of Mary, nor wast thou with them when they disputed with one another.
إذ قالت الملائكة يا مظيم إن الله يبشرك بكلمة يبشرك بكلمة من هسمه المسيح عيسى ابن مظيم وجها وجها في الدنيا والآخرة ومن المقربين
When the angel said: "O Mary, Allah gives thee glad tidings of a son through a word from Him. His name shall be the Messiah, Jesus, Son of Mary, honored in this world and in the next, and of those who are granted nearness to God."
ويُعلم الناس في المهدي وتهلا ومن الصالحين
And He shall speak to the people in the cradle, and win of middle age, and He shall be of the righteous.
قال رب أن لا يكون لي ولد ولم يمسني بشر قال كذلك الله يخلق ما يشاء إذا قضى أمر فإنما يقول له كن فيكون
She said: "My Lord, how shall I have a son when no man has touched me?" He said: "Such is the way of Allah; He creates what He pleases. When He decrees a thing, He says to it: 'Be,' and it is."
ويعلمه الكتاب والحكمة والتوراة والانجيل
And He will teach him the book, and the wisdom, and the Torah, and the Gospel.
ورسولا إلى بني إسرائيل أني قد جئتكم بأية من ربكم أني أخلق لكم أني أخلق لكم من الطينك هيئتك طين فأنفخ فيه فأنفخ فيه فيكون طيرا بإذن الله وأبرئ الأسماء والأبراف وأحيي الموت بإذن الله وأنبئكم بما تأكلون وما تدخرون في بيوتكم إن في ذلك لأية لكم إن كنتم ممن
And we'll send him as a messenger to the children of Israel with a message: "I come to you with a sign from your Lord, which is that I will fashion out for you a creation out of clay after the manner of a bird. Then I will breathe into it a new spirit, and it will become a soaring being by the command of Allah. And I will heal the night-blind and the leprous, and I will quicken the dead by the command of Allah. And I will announce to you what you will eat and what you will store up in your houses. Surely therein is a sign for you, if you are believers."
ومصدقا لما بين يدي من التوراة ولأحل لكم ولأحل لكم بعض الذي حزما عليكم وجئتكم بأية من ربكم فاتقوا الله وأطيعون
"And I come fulfilling that which is before me, namely the Torah, and to allow you some of that which was forbidden unto you. And I come to you with a sign from your Lord. So fear Allah and obey Me."
إن الله ربي وربكم فعبطوه هذا صراط مستقيم
Surely Allah is my Lord and your Lord, so worship Him. This is the right path.
فلما أحس عيسى منهم الكفر قال من أنفاضي إلى الله قال الحواديين نحن أنفاض الله آمنا بالله واشهد بأننا مسلمون
And when Jesus perceived their disbelief, He said: "Who will be My helpers in the cause of Allah?" The disciples answered: "We are the helpers of Allah. We have believed in Allah, and bear thou witness that we are obedient."
ربنا آمنا بما انزلت واتبعنا برسولا فاتبنا فاتبنا مع الشاهدين
"O Lord, we believe in that which Thou hast sent down, and we follow this messenger. So write us down among those who bear witness."
ومعكم ومعكم الله والله خير ماكين
And Jesus's enemies planned, and Allah also planned, and Allah is the best of planners.
إذ قال الله يا عيسى إني متوفك ورفك إليّ وموطهرك من الذين كفروا وجاعل وجاعل الذين اتبعوك فوق الذين كفروا إلى يوم القيامة ثم إليّ مرجعكم فأحكم بينكم فيما كنتم فيه دفلي فود
Remember the time when Allah said: "O Jesus, I will cause thee to die a natural death, and will raise thee to myself, and will clear thee of the charges of those who disbelieve, and will exalt those who follow thee above those who disbelieve until the day of resurrection. Then to Me shall be your return, and I will judge between you concerning that wherein you differ."
فأما الذين كفروا فأعذبهم عذابا شديدا في الدنيا والآخرة وما لهم من آخرين
Then as for those who disbelieve, I will punish them with a severe punishment in this world and in the next, and they shall have no helpers.
وأما الذين آمنوا وعملوا صالحات فيهم أجرهم والله لا يحب الضالين
And as for those who believe and do good works, He will give them their full rewards, and Allah loves not the wrongdoers.
ذلك نتنه عليك من الآيات والذكر الحكيم
That is what we recite unto thee of the signs and the reminder, full of wisdom.
إن مثلي عيسى عند اللهك مثلي آدم خلقه من تراد ثم قال له كن فيكون
Surely the case of Jesus with Allah is like the case of Adam. He created him out of dust, then He said to him: "Be," and he was.
الحق من ربك فلا تكون من المنطدين
This is the truth from thy Lord, so be thou not of those who doubt.
فمن حاجك فيه من بعض ما جاءك من العلم فقل تعالوا فقل تعالوا ندعو أبناءنا وأبنائكم ونسائنا ونسائكم وانفسنا وانفسنا وانفسكم ثم نبته الفن نجعل لعنة الله على الكاذبين
Now who so disputes with thee concerning him after what has come to thee of knowledge, say to him: "Come, let us call our sons and your sons, and our women and your women, and our people and your people. Then let us pray fervently, and invoke the curse of Allah on those who lie."
إن هذا له القف الحق وما من إله إلا الله وإن الله له العزيز الحكيم
This certainly is the true account. There is none worthy of worship save Allah, and surely it is Allah who is the mighty, the wise.
فإن تولوا فإن الله عليم بالمفسدين
But if they turn away, then remember that Allah fully knows the mischief-makers.
قل يا أهل الكتاب تعالوا إلى كلمة سواء بيننا وبينكم أن لا نعبد أن لا نعبد إلا الله ولا نشرك به شيئا ولا يتخذ بعضنا ولا يتخذ بعضنا بعض أذابا من دون الله فإن تولوا فقولوا شهدوا بأننا مسلمون
Say: "O people of the book, come to a word equal between us and you, that we worship none but Allah, and that we associate no partner with Him, and that some of us take not others for lords beside Allah. But if they turn away, then say: 'Bear witness that we have submitted to God.'"
يا أهل الكتاب كلم تحجون في إبراهيم وما وما انزل في التوراة والانجيل إلا من بعضه أفلا تعقلون
O people of the book, why do you dispute concerning Abraham when the Torah and the Gospel were not revealed till after him? Will you not then understand?
آنتم هؤلاء حاججتم فيما لكم به علم فلم فلم تحجون فيما ليس لكم به علم والله يعلم وانتم لا تعلمون
Behold, you are those who disputed about whereof you had some knowledge. Why then do you now dispute about that whereof you have no knowledge at all? Allah knows, and you know not.
ما كان ابراهيم يهوديا ولا نصراني ولكن ولكن كان حنيفا مسلما وما كان من المشركين
Abraham was neither a Jew nor a Christian, but he was ever inclined to God and obedient to Him, and he was not of those who associate gods with Allah.
ان اول الناس بابراهيم لالذين اتبعوه وهذا النبي وهذا النبي والذين آمنوا والله وللي المؤمنين
Surely the nearest of men to Abraham are those who followed him and this prophet, and those who believe in him, and Allah is the friend of believers.
ودت طائف من اهل الكتاب لو يضلونكم وما يضلون الا انفسهم وما يشعرون
A party of the people of the book would fain lead you astray, but they lead astray none except themselves, only they perceive not.
يا اهل الكتاب لم تكفمون بآيات الله وانتم تشهدون
Oh people of the book, why do you deny the signs of Allah while you are witness thereof?
يا اهل الكتاب لم تلبسون الحق بالباطل وتتمون الحق وانتم تعلمون
Oh people of the book, why do you confound truth with falsehood, and hide the truth knowingly?
وقالت طائف من اهل الكتاب آمنوا بالذي آمنوا بالذي انزل على الذين آمنوا وجهن هادي وادفروا وادفروا اخره لعلهم يرجعون
And a party of the people of the books say, "Declare your belief outwardly in that which has been revealed unto the believers, in the early part of the day, and disbelieve in the latter part thereof. Perchance they may return."
ولا تؤمنوا الا لمن تدعدينكم قل ان الهدى هدى الله ان يؤتى احد مثلما اوتتم او يحاجكم او يحاجكم عند ربكم قل ان الفضل بيد الله يؤتيه من يشاء والله واسع عليم
And obey none but Him who follows your religion. Say, "Surely true guidance, the guidance of Allah, is that one be given the like of that which has been given to you, or they would argue with you before your Lord. Say, "All grace is in the hand of Allah. He gives it to whomsoever he pleases, and Allah is bountiful, all-knowing."
يختار برشمة من يشاء والله زل فضل العظيم
He selects for His mercy whomsoever he pleases, and Allah is the Lord of mighty grace.
ومن اهل الكتاب من انتمنه بقين يؤدي اليك ومنهم من انتمنه بدينار لا يؤدي اليك الا الا ما دمت عليه قائما ذلك لأنهم قالوا ليس علينا في الامين سبيل ويقولون على الله الكذب وهم يعلمون
Among the people of the book, there is he who, if thou trust him with the treasure, will return it to thee; and among them there is he who, if thou trust him with the dinar, will not return it to thee, unless thou keep standing over him. That is because they say, "We are not liable to be called to account in the matter of the unlearned people, and they utter a lie against Allah knowingly."
من اوفى بهده واتقى فان الله يحب المتقين
Nay, but whoso fulfills his pledge and fears Allah, verily, Allah loves those who fear Him.
ان الذين يشترون بهده الله وامانهم سمنا قليلا اولئك اولئك لا خلاق لهم في الاخرة ولا يكلمهم الله ولا ينظر ولا ينظر اليهم يوم القيامة ولا يزكيهم ولهم عذاب عليم
As for those who take a paltry price in exchange for their covenant with Allah and their odes, they shall have no portion in the life to come, and Allah will neither speak to them nor look upon them on the day of resurrection, nor will He purify them, and for them shall be a grievous punishment.
وان منهم لفريقا يلبون السنتا بالكتاب لتحسبه لتحسبه من الكتاب وما هو من الكتاب ويقولون هو من عند الله وما هو من عند الله ويقولون على الله الكذب وهم يعلمون
And surely among them is a party who twists their tongues while reciting the book, that you may think it to be part of the book, while it is not part of the book; and they say, "It is from Allah," while it is not from Allah, and they utter a lie against Allah while they know.
ما كان لبشاد ان يؤتيه الله الكتاب والحكم والنبوة ثم يقول ثم يقول للناس كونوا عبادة لي من دون الله ولكن ولكن كونوا ربانيما بما كنتم تعلمون الكتاب وبما كنتم تدرسون
It does not befit a truthful man that Allah should give him the book and wisdom and prophethood, and then he should say to him, "Be my worshippers instead of Allah." But he would say, "Be solely devoted to the Lord, because you teach the book and because you study it."
ولا يحمركم او تتخذ الملائكة والنبيين عذابا ويامركم بالكفر بعد اذ انتم مسلمون
Nor does it befit him that he should bid you take the angels and the prophets for lords. What? Would he enjoin you to disbelieve after you have submitted to God?
واذ اخذ الله ميثاق النبيين لما اتيتكم من كتاب وحكمة وحكمة ثم جاءكم رسول مصدق لما معكم لتومن النبي لتومن النبي ولا تنفرنه قال اقربتم واخذتم على بالكم اسرة قالوا اقربنا قال فاشهدوا وانا معكم من الشاهدين
And remember the time when Allah took a covenant from the people through the prophets, saying, "Whatever I give you of the book and wisdom, and then there comes to you a messenger fulfilling that which is with you. You shall believe in him and help him." And he said, "Do you agree, and do you accept the responsibility which I lay upon you in this matter?" They said, "We agree." He said, "Then bear witness, and I am with you among the witnesses."
فمن تولى بعد ذلك فاولئك هم الفاسقون
Now, whoso turns away after this, then surely those are the transgressors.
اف غير الدين الله يبغون وله اسلم من في السماوات والارض والارض قرع وقرع واليه يرجعون
Do they seek a religion other than Allah's, while to Him submits whosoever is in the heavens and the earth, willingly or unwillingly, and to Him shall they all be returned?
قل آمنا بالله وما انزل علينا وما انزل وما انزل على ابراهيم واسمعيل واسحق ويعطوب ويعطوب والاسباب وما اتيا موسى وعيسى والنبيون من ربهم لا مفكس بين احد منهم ونحن له مسلمون
Say, "We believe in Allah, and in that which has been revealed to us, and that which was revealed to Abraham and Ishmael, and Isaac and Jacob and the tribes, and in that which was given to Moses and Jesus and other prophets from their Lord. We make no distinction between any of them, and to Him we submit."
ومن يبتغي غير الاسلام دينا فلن يقبل منه وهو في الاخرة من الخاسرين
And whoso seeks a religion other than Islam, it shall not be accepted of him, and in the hereafter he shall be among the losers.
كيف يهدي الله قوما كفروا بعد ايمانهم وشهدوا وشهدوا ان الرسول حق وجاءهم البينات والله لا يهدي القوم الظالمين
How shall Allah guide a people who have disbelieved after believing, and who had borne witness that the messenger was true, and to whom clear proofs had come? And Allah guides not the wrongdoing people.
اولئك جداؤهم ان عليهم لعنة الله والملائكة
As for such, their reward is that on them shall be the curse of Allah and of angels and of men, all together.
خالدين فيها لا يخاف عنهم العذاب ولاهم ينظرون
They shall abide thereunder. Their punishment shall not be lightened, nor shall they be reprieved.
الا الذين تابوا من بعض ذلك واخلحوا فان الله غفور
Except those who repent thereafter and amend; and surely Allah is most forgiving, merciful. Surely those who disbelieve after they have believed and then increase in disbelief, their repentance shall not be accepted, and these are they who have gone astray. As for those who have disbelieved and die while they are disbelievers, there shall not be accepted from any one of them even the earth full of gold though he offered as a ransom. It is these for whom shall be a grievous punishment, and they shall have no helpers.